All right, council members, it's 5:56 PM. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Please stand for the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. All right, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
10 of 11?
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is going to be, to change the line item for Luzerne County Council's advertising budget to $2,000. Is there any public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. We'll restart at 6:01. Thank you. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Attorney Skeen, could you please announce the executive session?
Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session concerning an employment matter with the prison.
Thank you, Attorney Skeen. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
For one second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. I do have one public comment slip from Mr. Griffith.
Public comment is on number five, the Memo of Understanding for the Collective for the Launa Contract. I would like to know if there is a Launa contract because I haven't seen one yet. As a comptroller, I've requested a copy of that document and they, I understand, is still in progress. Yet council has adopted that contract probably many, many months ago. So I don't know if there is an actual contract somewhere that you guys are going to change or not, but I would like to see the actual contract that council adopted back in February or whatever it was because there is none. I've asked HR, I've asked the manager, and I haven't gotten a copy. So if we could get a copy of the actual document, that would be great. I know I, there's some punctuality and some different things that they're working in the contract, which I thought was kind of different. When council adopts a document, I would thought that it was be finished, but unfortunately, I guess it's not. So if I could get a copy of that, I would appreciate it. And number six is the motion to change the residency requirement. I think the provision that you put in there is a great provision that says it's a five-year window. I think that's a great safety net for that. And I also think that the ability for us to get more, better, not better qualified people, but certainly open up the pool bigger so we can interview candidates would be great. So I think that's a step in the right direction. I know back in 2014 or whenever they passed that ordinance, there was a lot of discussion about that and what was the downfall of not having the ability to interview people from outside the county. And I know it passed by a very narrow margin. So I think council is doing a good thing by changing the provision to at least put the five-year window in it. So hopefully that'll get some more discussion and get that on the agenda and discuss and get it approved. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Attorney Skeen, you wanted to answer one of Mr. Griffith's questions?
Yes. Walter, the contract is under red line. The provisions of the contract relating to the financial components of the agreement have not changed at all. That's what council had voted on. It's just some minor provisions of the contract that they were still working on. But that is, that is, it wasn't renegotiated. It was just the original contract. We hadn't had the whole thing in full. We had the summary. So nothing's changing from the summary that council got to say. That should be, thank you, it should be done in the next two weeks. I've seen the red line version.
All right, thank you, Attorney Skeen. Okay, any other public comment?
I find that for one.
I don't see your slip, ma'am, but you can certainly go up to the podium. State your name and municipality.
You may still be out there.
Okay, it's possible.
And I'm only here to talk about working with ICE as am I in order for tonight's meeting.
Okay, that is not on the voting session agenda. So can you, you'd have to come back up at the, at the end of the meeting, at the next, at the next public comment opportunity? All right? Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items only? Anybody on the Zoom? Okay, all right, hearing done. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 24, 2025 voting session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. Move on to the agenda. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution to renew the lease with the Krishani LLC for Magisterial District Court, 110304.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution to renew the lease with the Krishani LLC for Magisterial District Court, 110304.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution to renew the lease with UFCW, Community Federal Credit Union for Magisterial District Court, 110203.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a memorandum of understanding to the collective bargaining agreement between Luzerne County and Launa Public Service Employees Union Local 1300.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second.
On the question?
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend, to correct the typo. The union is the local 1310, so I'd like to make a motion to amend it to say Launa Local 1310 instead of 1300.
All right.
I'll second it.
Yeah, it'll be in two places. All right, motion, there's a motion and a second.
Roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to introduce ordinance amending the Luzerne County Personnel Code regarding residency requirements for division heads in certain management positions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
Could I propose an amendment for the very last whereas, just to delete the very last segment where it says, we're on page 47, members?
So.
After the employee's attained five years of continuing employment with the county.
So this is just a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Correct.
So would we be able to do that amendment at the next meeting where we, where we actually have the ordinance introduced?
I guess we could, but my, part of my reasoning is when this, there's a public comment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure, yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely.
It was, it was actually a pretty spirited debate that we had many, many years ago about this, believe it or not, and I believe it was a 6-5 vote. The, the big issue was that we wanted to make sure that our high levels of management knew the county, they knew the people, they had the wherewithal. You can imagine how that side went. And there was a significant minority of us who said, look, we just want the best people. And sometimes the best person might happen to live in Beaumont or might happen to live in Old Forge or Beaver Meadows or somewhere just over the line, but there is much Luzerne County as any of us that live within the limits because it's metro area. So I think if we could put this out there with that thing deleted, I think you might see a lot more public support than you realize and because this is why we introduce things, right? We want to make sure we get big feedback from the public. My two cents, everybody.
Attorney Skeen?
Yeah, we can't amend now at the introduction.
Then I withdraw my motion. If we legally can't do it, that's all right, but.
Certainly can do that at the, at the next meeting.
And I'll say the same piece again.
Yeah, and that's, I don't, I don't think that necessarily will be an issue at all. Ms. Smith?
Thank you.
All we need is four votes to introduce it. Can't we amend it after we introduce it? I think we just have to have the vote to introduce it.
Right, that's, yeah, we're, we're going to have a motion to introduce, we'll introduce, and then we have the discussion at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
We'll call the question to Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, we'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Ma'am, if you, if you'd like to get up, yeah, we'll have you go first.
My name is Andrea Glaud. I live in Wokesboro, Pennsylvania, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just would like to start with some facts. The 14th Amendment of the Constitution states, and I quote, "No one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the process of law." Due process ensures, one, a neutral and unbiased tribunal, two, the notice by government intended of intended action and asserted grounds for it, and three, the opportunity for the individual to prevent reasons why the government should not move forward. Violation of due process occurs when the state enforces a judgment against a party without giving an opportunity for, for the party to be heard before final judgment is entered. The district attorney ensures justice is served by bringing criminal charges to trial and seeking appropriate sentences. In some jurisdictions, the district attorney investigates allegations of criminal misconduct by law enforcement officers. Criminal misconduct includes use of excessive force, false arrest, and violation of constitutional rights. Violation of constitutional rights includes, one, unlawful seizures and racial profiling. In fact, the police have the duty to intervene when they witness misconduct by another officer. Most people who are not currently comatose have witnessed both the violation of the constitution, of constitutional rights by ICE agents and their abhorrent criminal behavior. For this council to be considering aiding and abetting the criminal activity being perpetrated by ICE agents in the name of justice and/or respect for the risk, for the rule of law is an affront to all citizens of the United States. Let me remind you, you solemnly declare your allegiance to this country and everything it stands for at the beginning of every one of your meetings when you pledge justice for all. We're about to find out if you really mean justice for some, an aberration of everything the pledge stands for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glaud. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Griffith, are you, you had a slip?
Yeah, I just, mine's real brief.
Okay.
So. Under public comment, I just want to, as an ACE Commission Chairman, I just wanted to thank the Chairman of Council and the Chairman of the Code Committee for coming yesterday to our meeting to address the shortcomings of the ACE Code, of which the Commission is trying to fix. And it's been like three or four years that we've been wrestling with that whole issue of the ACE Code. So it's a step in a, in a positive direction to have people from this council show up to hear the concerns of the Commission so that you guys, this council can fix those issues. Because it's, the ACE Commission is really very, very important to this county. Ethics Commission is very important to this county, and it's the reason why it was put in as the cornerstone of our charter back in 2012 when we passed the charter. That was the cornerstone. That was the selling issue for our Home Rule Charter back in 2012 when we passed that Home Rule Charter. That was the selling issue. People wanted accountability and they wanted an ethics code that was accountable. So thank you to those members that showed up and heard our concerns and looking forward to making that correction work so that people have a venue to come to file their complaints and get them addressed. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Harrison?
My slip is out there.
That's okay.
You have a couple out there, I think.
Okay, that's all right.
Hello, thank you for having me here. My name is Clancy Harrison. I'm the, I'm a resident of Forty Fort and the founder of the Food Dignity Movement, and I'm here just to say thank you. Thank you for supporting Food Dignity for the ARPA funding. The ARPA funds allowed us to invest in local agriculture and deliver fresh, locally grown food to nonprofits serving most, our most vulnerable populations. These nonprofits serve people who are battling substance use disorder, women fleeing from domestic violence, and children living in poverty, plus many more. The ARPA funding significantly strengthened our capacity and able, enabled us to apply for USDA grant, which is the resilient infrastructure supply, RFSI, and we got it. We would not have been able to get that funding unless you gave us the ARPA funding, and I want to be here to show you how it keeps building and building and building. We were able to apply for the RFSI grant on behalf of five farmers. Three of them are in Luzerne County, one's in Wyoming County, and one is in Lackawanna County. We're a pass-through operation for them. They would not have been able to apply for a complex grant because they're small farms, and they're building their capacity so we can actually serve more people. They can grow more food, and we can serve more people within our county. So I just, again, I'm here to thank you because we wouldn't be here without you. So that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison, and we really appreciate the work that you've done. That was, your project was very impressive when we came and toured the facility, and what you do is just, we think it's amazing. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Go ahead, ma'am. State your name and municipality.
My name is Laura Penaro from Durie. I'm here to talk about the 287G program. It's deeply problematic for several critical reasons. It encourages ICE and law enforcement agencies to operate in ways that often skirt the constitutional protections while also forcing local police into roles that alienate them from the communities they are supposed to serve. Implementing this program would significantly erode public trust in law enforcement and create unnecessary confusion, fear, and instability within our communities. This cannot be allowed to move forward. Immigrants, many of whom already face systematic disadvantages, would be placed in an even more vulnerable position, unable to defend themselves against ICE's unchecked authority. The county simply does not have the legal resources, particularly in immigration and civil rights law, enough to offer meaningful support to those affected. County councils should strongly encourage the DA to pursue alternative strategies that prioritize due process, community safety, and respect for human rights. And I'm part of a bigger coalition that is going to push back on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penaro. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? All right, there's a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned at 6:19. Do we want to keep going? Okay, all right, okay, we'll keep going. We'll start right up with the, with the work session. All right, I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
All right, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Hearing done. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted? Thank you. First, we have division reports for May 2025.
Okay, I'm introducing the divisionary reports for, they're actually for June of 2025.
June, apologize.
If anyone has any questions on any information that's in the reports or you need any additional clarification, please email me and I'd be happy to get that for you.
Any questions for Ms. Rozell? Okay. Number two, discussion regarding the renewal of Department of Labor lease for Job Corps property. Is there, Attorney Skeen, go ahead.
Yes, we previous, excuse me, we previously announced from administration that the Job Corps was going to be closing, but it was put on pause. So we were surprised that the federal government wanted to renew their lease. It's not really something council wants, council has to vote on because it's an automatic provision in the lease that they could renew it. And we just thought that was odd, so I contacted the federal government, Department of Labor, and discussed it with them, and the good thing is it costs about $1 million a year to maintain that property. So it's good that they want to renew it because then they'll be responsible, responsible for upkeep of the property. And then I questioned them to make sure that they understood they're only paying $1,000 a month because in our original contract, which is over 20 years old, they were going to be improving the property, which they did. They recently finished a $5 million building, and I let them know that if they wanted to use it for any other purpose outside of Job Corps, that we'd have to raise the rent because that would be outside of what we normally charge. They assured me they have no interest in doing that, that there was an injunction, and that as far as they know, for now, Job Corps is moving forward. So I just wanted to bring that to council to let them know. But again, it's an automatic provision. If we didn't want to renew it, then we would have had to give them notice earlier.
All right, thank you, Attorney Skeen. Any discussion, any questions for Attorney Skeen on the, on the Job Corps lease? All right, moving along. Discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with McCarthy Tire Service Company for fleet service, truck, and equipment maintenance and repairs of county-owned vehicles. Ms. Barich.
Hi, this would be a two-year contract with McCarthy Tires, and it would be to fix the larger vehicles, the dump trucks, the backhoes, you know, equipment that wouldn't be in our normal scope of duties at the county garage. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Do we have, I, do we have a, a contract currently with any other organization?
No, this was put out through the purchasing department.
Understood, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
And that was my question. There was RFP put out?
Yes.
Was there other respondents?
There was, there was just one other, and it was actually put out for bid. So just to clarify, it wasn't an RFP, it was a bid, but only two, two individual companies responded.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Number four, discussion, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to jointly apply with Carbon County for a multimodal transportation grant. This is for the Tannery Bridge?
Yes, it's for the Tannery Bridge. Commissioner Arner is here from Carbon County. Carbon County will be the applicant. Luzerne County would partner. We jointly own that bridge. I think it's County Bridge 18.
Okay. All right, any questions? Any questions for Commissioner Arner? Thank you for attending, by the way. Thank you for making the drive up.
No, thank you. I'm on the MPO, and I'm trying to get it that I can say that this is funding, but it's working with other counties, and I think what we have to do is all the counties is try and fund the project that we can set up for this year of the project. And I think we always look at the interstate that we have to fix, but the majority of our people that don't work thrive on the smaller bridges, and we've got to keep that in place. So thank you very much for.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Any, Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not familiar with that bridge. Could you just, in the tense Reader Digest version?
Commissioner, would you be able to go up to the microphone when you speak? Just because the people on the Zoom won't be able to hear you.
Yeah, my question is, is it full replacement? Is it rehabilitation?
I have the application.
Well, it's probably going to be a rehabilitation. One side needs like some peer work done, and the impotment is dropping a little bit. So until we get the engineering facts back, we won't know. And I want to say one thing, like, I mean, I think Michelle does a phenomenal job for you guys, and we have a person that, since I've been on the MPO for the last year and a half, we've gotten a grant for $800,000 for our largest bridge that's 365 feet long. We got another one that we applied for that we're probably going to get $1.6 million, and that's the one that actually Senator McCormick is pushing forward for us. And we're going to continue to try to get grants, and even if it's going to be this, that it's going to be shared between both counties. I mean, you'd be the applicant for, you know, right along with us. So we're in this as a partner, and I can't really tell you what the cost is going to be until the engineers look at it.
Okay, so it's a rehab?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I speak a lot.
No, that's all right.
I give a lot of information.
No, we appreciate it. That's very helpful, especially for those of us who aren't familiar with that particular bridge.
Well, and, yeah, I want to, she reminded me too of that. It's a good thing you're here. But the Route 80 Bridge is the one that's like everybody's working on, and there's routes going around it. And it's not, it's not really a detour route, but we've had our Route 443. That was a multimillion-dollar project that was going through there, and some of the bridges get ruined because the local people use it. They, you know, they make their own detour, and that's good for them. I mean, and that's why I said, like, I think it's good to provide them the bridges that they normally go over to get to work because, like, if this thing, and even like the Weatherly area, if this bridge would be closed, I think it would be devastating just to the Weatherly area alone itself, you know, not even the ones that are a little bit north because you have the state park right there, and, you know, there's different canoeing and hiking and biking. So it's like a small bridge, but it's used a lot.
All right. Any other questions?
So, did I sell it to yous or not?
I think you might have sold it to us, no.
And if I could just add, we did have a call with DCED last week. We'd also have to sign an MOU if we were awarded funds from DCED. We'd have to sign an MOU with Carbon County.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Barich. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you again for making the drive up here. Okay, finally, we have a presentation on the Civil Air Patrol with Major Sean Stanford. Major Stanford? It should, they should be able to get it up in a second here.
All right. Well, first, let me start. I am Sean Stanford. I am the, one of the deputy commanders at the local Civil Air Patrol Squadron, and I am resident of West Pittston. And before I get started, I'd like to, I think I have enough for everybody. Give everybody a copy of our squadron patch and my card?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. So, as I said, I am Sean Stanford. I am deputy commander at the Civil Air Patrol Squadron here in Luzerne County. At, we are at the Wyoming Airport currently. Next slide, please, ma'am? Or do I control that? That's great. So basically, Civil Air Patrol, not a lot of people have heard about it, although we've been around for a long time. It is a national organization, is congressionally chartered and funded. It is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. We are the official civilian auxiliary of the United States Air Force, and we have almost 70,000 volunteers, both cadets, teenagers, and adults across the United States, Alaska, Hawaii, Puerto Rico, and even some overseas squadrons at military posts overseas. Next, please. So in 2025, we had about 70,000 members, which is a nice bump from the days of COVID where we lost a lot of our membership. And we have the largest fleet of single-engined aircraft in the world. We have over 500 aircraft that are deployed across the United States, including Alaska and Hawaii. And as you can see, we flew over 100,000 hours on those aircraft last year, which is several hundred hours per aircraft. And the value of the volunteer hours that Civil Air Patrol members provide in support of the various missions for federal, state, county, and local organizations is over $280 million by our calculation. And you see, it's a $4 return for every dollar invested. Our budget from Congress is about $70 million a year, most of which goes to play, pay for aircraft. Next slide, please. So, Civil Air Patrol was founded just prior to World War II. At the time, it was pretty obvious that there was going to be a war, so private pilots, people who would not qualify for military service for various reasons, decided that they wanted to help out and that they wanted to keep flying. And obviously, during a war, private aviation is heavily curtailed. So they formed an organization called Civil Air Patrol to help out where they could and to keep flying. During the war, they actually did submarine patrols off the coasts. They did various border patrols. They did patrols, air patrols, to help protect facilities such as factories on the West Coast, and even fire patrols in the portions of the country that have large forests because all these things were war resources at the time. Next slide, please. After the war, Civil Air Patrol was incorporated as a private corporation, and then when the Air Force was founded in 1948, Civil Air Patrol was made the official auxiliary of the Air Force. Through the Cold War, it continued to perform missions. A lot of that was heavily civil defense back in those days. And there was a lot of air search and rescue. That was one of the primary missions of Civil Air Patrol at the time was if somebody goes out in their small aircraft and they don't make it to where they're going to get, Civil Air Patrol was called out to help find them. Subsequent to the Cold War, Civil Air Patrol was the only non-governmental organization that was flying after 9/11. And the first aerial surveys of the Ground Zero site were done by Civil Air Patrol aircraft. And we had a tremendous amount of missions supporting the various governmental relief during the COVID, during the COVID pandemic. Next slide, please. So Civil Air Patrol, as I said, is a national organization, is headquartered in Montgomery, Alabama, at the Air Force Base there. And as you can see from the picture on the left-hand side, that is the old base hospital from the 50s, but that is now Civil Air Patrol's headquarters building. We have eight regions across the United States. Pennsylvania is part of the Northeast region, and the Northeast region is comprised of the New England states plus New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. Here in Pennsylvania, we have, it doesn't say here, but we'll get to that in the next slide. Next slide, please. Here in Pennsylvania, you have about 50 squadrons, part of the over 1,400 squadrons we have across the country. And we have about 1,700 members between adults, senior members like myself, and cadets, the teenagers. We have 11 aircraft, and a bunch of vehicles, and a whole bunch of radios. We get about $100,000 a year in state funding, and that's been the number for a long time. And that primarily goes to support the functions of the wing, the state headquarters, to support the 50 squadrons and the aircraft in the buildings, excuse me, and the vehicles. And the calculation is that we return $6.5 million worth of value to the Commonwealth for the $100,000 that we get from the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. So, talking about Civil Air Patrol, it is a volunteer nonprofit organization. There are no paid members of Civil Air Patrol. We are all volunteers, and we are from all walks of life. I myself am a computer programmer and a retired soldier. My squadron commander is a former Air Force enlisted man, airmen, and a, he's a truck driver. One of the other deputy commanders, one of our chief pilots at the local squadron here in Wyoming, he is a retired police officer. And the other deputy commander is, he actually works at a church down in Hazelton. So we come from all walks of life, and we're all very passionate about this organization. So the organization has three missions, first of which is aerospace education. Aerospace education is primarily intended for two things. One is to provide internal aerospace education to our cadets. We are an air organization. We are an Air Force auxiliary. So our cadets are exposed to many different aspects of aerospace technology and aerospace industry and aerospace power, as well as STEM and cyber are a new big thing in the last few years under that whole aerospace education. However, we also have an outgoing, an outward-facing mission. The Air Force provides tens of thousands of STEM kits that cover the gamut from, again, aviation to cyber to robotics, so on and so forth, that Civil Air Patrol provides into middle schools at no cost to the school. It's all provided by the Air Force. So that's aerospace education mission. Next slide, please. So, the CEP program. The CEP program is my thing. I have been, I started as a cadet in Civil Air Patrol in 1977, and I have been involved with cadets ever since. If there was no Cadet Program in Civil Air Patrol, I would not be with the organization because that's why I'm here. I love training cadets. Civil Air Patrol cadets range in age from 12 to 20, and with a bolus being 14, 15, 16, right in that area. And they have a program that covers leadership, character development, fitness, and of course, aerospace education. Now, on its face, the Cadet Program has some resemblance to other programs of its type for teenagers like scouting or JRTC, but it's very different in some very powerful ways. JRTC is a military-style program, but it is school-based, not community-based like Civil Air Patrol. And there are significant hurdles to jump if you want to get a JRTC program going in your school. Scouting is a great program, but it is, and it is community-based. But one of the things that Civil Air Patrol brings to the table, and I think is one of the most powerful things about Civil Air Patrol, is that in order to progress as a cadet, you're required to step into leadership roles, take charge, and make things happen. That is, as good as scouting is, that is not a requirement. You can move all the way through scouting, and you'll never really have to be in charge of things. It's just a different program. But Civil Air Patrol, these guys promote through their various cadet grades, and eventually they are placed in charge. And it's, it's not an option. They are, they are given responsibilities and authority to make things happen within the scope of their responsibilities. So it's an excellent program. As I said, I did it myself, and I am thrilled to be doing it now with my cadets. Next slide, please. So, emergency services mission. Now, as I mentioned, originally and early on, emergency services had a lot to do with finding downed aircraft. Thankfully, with modern technology, that's not so common anymore, and that's a good thing. But now, we're more focused on support for emergency services, emergency management agencies. We support FEMA, we support the various state emergency management agencies, we support county emergency management agencies to perform missions based on Air Force allocation of our forces, of our strength. And as I said, Civil Air Patrol aircraft were the only aircraft flying in the days immediately following 9/11, and Civil Air Patrol's, Civil Air Patrol aircraft took the first aerial survey of Ground Zero. The aircraft on the left there is that aircraft, and it is in the Air Force Museum in Dayton, Ohio at this time. It has been retired from service and go to places of honor in the Air Force Museum. And all of this, all of this is actually is at no cost to taxpayers. Obviously, there's that initial funding from the government and from Congress, but that pays for the aircraft. After we get the aircraft, the maintenance, the gas, all that, all the hours that we provide for assistance are volunteer. We don't get paid at all, and we're, we're very happy to do it, actually. Next slide, please. So, out of the meat of it. So, as I said, I was a cadet in 1977. I was, lived in Connecticut, and I had a great time as a cadet. And since over those subsequent, going on 50 years now, other than my brief breaks in service for my military career, I've been in Civil Air Patrol constantly since then. And I've seen firsthand in my own life and in the lives of some of the people, some of the cadets I've worked with, some of the senior members I've worked with, the impacts Civil Air Patrol can have. One of my cadets from, she's 20 years ago now, she's about to retire as Lieutenant Colonel in the Army. And as you saw on one of the earlier slides, you may have noticed about 10% of the entering class of the Air Force Academy is Civil Air Patrol cadets, and they tend to do well. As I said, I was Civil Air Patrol cadet. I went in the Marine Corps. I didn't go into the Air Force. But, and that's not unusual. A lot of cadets go into other branches other than the Air Force. Just Civil Air Patrol is a really good exposure to those basic personality and discipline and achievement traits that really help in the military. A lot of what I needed to get me through Paris Island, I knew from Civil Air Patrol. I knew I could do the things I set my mind to doing, and it was correct. But the squadron I joined is in Stratford, Connecticut, and it's a Stratford Eagles composite squadron. And the building that was, that I was a cadet in is still there on the airport in Stratford to this day. And that's what I want to talk about. One of the most powerful and important things that any Civil Air Patrol unit can have is a stable location, and there's a number of reasons for that, but one of which is, and probably the most powerful is, is that over time, people know you're there, and they know where you are. If my grandson was living near Stratford, Connecticut, he doesn't, he lives in Lansdale, I would know where to go to take him and introduce him to this great thing that I did when I was his age. And it also gives us the opportunity to be a lasting and ongoing presence in the community and do the great things we do for the community and for the people of the community going forward, hopefully into the far future. So, what I'm asking for at this point is, we are right now in the pilots' club at the airport. Mr. Scrabola is very graciously letting us use that space. The problem with it is, it's too small. We are out of room. I have 20 cadets showing up on a typical night, and that leaves about two empty chairs in the entire classroom. We also don't have any storage. We have a small closet that they'll use. That's all that's in there, and they're letting us use that, but we don't have anything else. There's uniforms and aerospace education equipment and radios in people's garages, mine, for instance. So what I'm looking for is some space, some land, enough to put up a small building that I can outfit as a classroom, and some office space, some workspace, a lockable supply area, and a radio room, and a restroom. And in addition to the, enabling us to do the things we do now, the, kind of the offer is that this would be something that the county could take advantage of if they, if the county needed some, like a command post or emergency operations center there at the airport. I would also say that, add that, as an airport tenant, if we can get this permanent space, I am, I can't guarantee it, but I know that we will have an airplane here, based here, pretty much as long as we, as long as we have this space, which is, obviously, that's revenue into the airport right there. Because we are the northernmost, easternmost squadron of a decent size in Pennsylvania. There's this very small squadron in Scranton and a small squadron in Mount Pocono, but we have like a dozen pilots or more. So we are well fixed to take advantage of having an aircraft. We have an aircraft now. But if something were to go south and the squadron had to fold, then that aircraft would leave. So that's what I'm looking for. And I'm looking for, I'll just lay it out there, I'm looking for a nominal cost lease or some sort of MOU. 99 years at a dollar a year would be great. And I want to put up a building. I will find my own grants and put up my own building, but I know that there's some ARPA money for the airport. And so, full disclosure, I'm on the airport board, and I was on the part of the group that selected the engineering companies to work at the airport. So I have an understanding of how that funding works, so I know that a fair amount of it has to be spent really soon. And this is a good way to spend at least some of it, not too much, but some of it. And again, our goal is to be a long-term partner to the community. So with that, I thank you for your time, and. thank you for your time, and any questions for me?
Thank you, Major Stanford. I think Ms. Sparish would like to come up and just make a comment or two regarding the ARPA funding related to the airport. And then we can have questions from council members.
Just for clarification, we do have ARPA money, but it had to be allocated by twelve-thirty-one of twenty-four, and it's already been allocated for projects at the airport. We'll be doing the Jet A Fuel Facility, the T hangars, and the AWAS system.
And that's all going to be in by next year?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Yes.
I mean, that's aggressive.
No, it has to be in by twelve-thirty-one of twenty-six, but it will be done.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, next year, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council members? Go ahead, Mr. Lescavage.
So, I think what you provide is a great service. We'd be foolish not to embrace something like that. I'd be in favor of giving, you know, a long-term lease of a piece of land there. I would like you to sit down with the Scrabolas and figure that out, where that piece of property would be. And then, of course, I would encourage you to get, you know, grants or anything, since the ARPA money's already spoken for, you know, and then move forward with it. Because anybody that's been watching television, unless you're, you know, not paying attention, what happened in Texas is certainly, you know, earth-shattering. In a matter of forty-five minutes, your life can change in a, in a big hurry.
As I said, sir, I live in West Pittston, so.
Yeah, so does me and Brian. We're, we're very well aware of that. So, I, no, I applaud your effort. I think you're doing a great thing. And I know there was, you know, many helicopters and planes flying over rescuing people in Texas. And I would like to see this happen. We just got to, you know, figure out a way.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I believe that's something we definitely could look into, and I certainly would support that. I think you all do a fantastic job. I admire the Civil Air Patrol. And as a matter of fact, one of the handouts you gave me is of Major Heester. I went to college and graduated college with him. I actually know him very well. He's a great guy.
That's awesome.
Still friends with him on Facebook, and I see all his videos that he posts of him flying in the F-16s, and it's just, I, I'm very proud of him every day, to know that I went to school with him and know him as a friend. So, I, I appreciate that, and I'm going to send him a text after this to let him know he was part of our meeting tonight. Ms. Krishnowski, and then Mr. Thornton, sorry.
Sorry, Brian. I, I was just curious, what is the ratio between men and women going to this? Because it seems like clearly there's a lot more men involved in this than women.
It does. I would say, among cadets, it's probably, and I, I, I don't have a firm number. I can generate it, but I can't, I don't have it in my head. Upwards of thirty percent of our cadets are female, twenty-five, thirty percent, and maybe a little less of male, female and male among the, the adult members.
Is there any way to get more involvement with female people?
That'd be great. That'd be great.
I guess my question is, are you looking into ways to do that?
We are constantly looking for ways to get really anybody involved. So, one of Civil Air Patrol's-
Because it just seems like when there's a male dominant thing, it stays that way, and I guess that's why I'm asking.
Well, so, our National Commander right now is Brigadier General, Major General Regina A. So, and her Deputy Commander is Major General Rose, oh, she's Chief of Staff. I can't quite remember who's, but the, the, two of the top slots in the organization are held by women, ma'am. Pennsylvania Wing is not commanded by a woman at this point, it's commanded by Will Schlosser, but, you know, women hold very important roles in Civil Air Patrol.
I guess I would just like to see more, you know?
I, I would as well, yes, ma'am. And I will do everything in my power to make that happen, at least here in the county.
I think it's a worthwhile cause, though, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things. One, if you could stick around after the meeting, I just wanted to talk to you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And to your point, I was surprised, about two years ago it was, we did a tour of that airport, and some of us were on the tour, I forget who it was. But I learned that there is a program specifically for women, women in aviation, at that airport. Now, the Scrabola is the operating company that, that runs the airport, the Scrabola family. One of their nieces, who is a pilot, in that family, you have no choice, no matter if you're male or female, you've got to be a pilot. And she runs her own Women in Aviation program there. I saw their bulletin board with all the accomplishments of the women, and there's a big advocacy for women in aviation at that airport right now. So, I would encourage any council member here to, you know, go over there and take a look, or we could arrange it through the county manager. It's very interesting, though. I often thought of that, but my wife shut it down quickly.
And I would add that my cadets, I have several female cadets, and they participate in that Women in Aviation event every year. Last year, the year before, last year, I think, I sent four or five female cadets to, planned at the Slocum Park, where the Girl Scouts were having kind of a, a career, a career day thing with their summer camp. And my cadets ran kind of an aviation, hey, here's how, here's how airplanes work kind of thing for them.
Yeah, and I know at that airport, she does something similar, this young woman, Scrabola woman, I forget her first name, I apologize, but I think she recruits from the local high schools STEM program females to participate in that. So, it'd be interesting to go over and take a look at that. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
Ms. McDermott, then Ms. Smith.
Just something that I thought about when you were saying going to high school. So, do you actually teach someone how to fly a plane? Is that part of the?
So, the short answer is yes. The slightly longer answer is, for adults, it's, if you have your private pilot's license, if you have your certificate, Civil Air Patrol will teach you what you need to do in order to fly for them. Because obviously, our requirements on how you fly, and the procedures, and for the mission flying are pretty specific. So, that has to be, that has to be taught. And that's called Form Five flying, called a Form Five checkride. I'm, I'm not a pilot, so I can't really speak too much to that. But on the cadet side, there are actually opportunities to learn to fly for these guys. And, and they're, it's, it's actually pretty amazing. We have three different things you can do. You can do, so first of all, let me start by saying that every cadet in Civil Air Patrol gets five orientation flights. So, what that is, is, and like I said, we have an airplane here. The pilot will pick three or four cadets, however many he's got time for that day. And this happened for us last weekend, actually, we flew some cadets. And the pilot will put them in the airplane, and you've got the pilot, and the cadet with in the front seat, and you've got a couple in the backseat. And they've all got the big Mickey Mouse ears on, and he will talk them through what he's doing, explain the instruments to them, and he'll roll out, and he'll just do the whole thing, and then he'll take off and tell them what's going on. And then, when he gets up to altitude, he'll actually let the cadet sit next to him and fly the plane. In fact, if, on one of my slides, you can see a cadet. Am I slide still up?
No.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
But there's a picture of this cadet, I think it's probably a fourteen, fifteen-year-old cadet, who can barely see over the cockpit, combing, is actually flying the airplane. Now, the pilot doesn't, obviously, doesn't want to get into any trouble, but they are actually maneuvering that airplane. And then they'll land, and then they'll change seats, and then they'll do it again, so everybody gets a chance to sit in that front seat with the pilot. And this happens five times for every cadet. Then, if the cadet is truly inspired, there are actually a couple ways for them to actually learn to fly. We have what are called flight academies, and they happen every summer. There are probably a dozen, maybe fifteen around the country, and they, the cadets will apply for them. And it's not easy to get into, because it's pretty competitive. But if they get accepted, they'll go to wherever the flight academy is being held. We hold two here in northeast region, one in New Jersey and one in New York. And they will spend a week basically doing flight school. They'll do the ground stuff, they'll do instruments, they'll do, you know, all the various things that I don't know about that pilots learn. And then, if they're doing well enough, at the end of the week, we'll take this sixteen, seventeen-year-old kid, and they'll give them the keys to a quarter-million-dollar Civil Air Patrol aircraft in, say, see you in half an hour. And these kids will actually fly the aircraft, they'll solo the aircraft. Those are the flight academies. And then, we also have what's called the Cadet Wings Program, which is, cadets can apply for a full scholarship that will get them the private pilot certificate. And Civil Air Patrol pays for that to happen at the local FBO. So, if, if one of my cadets lands that, they will be basically learning to fly with the Scrabolas. And the Air Force and Civil Air Patrol will be paying for it. So, yes, there are absolutely ways to, to learn to fly.
Okay, Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Thornton.
I just wanted to say, say thank you for coming. I think this is a great project. I actually have had a few students who have gone through the, through this program, and so I've seen the effect it has, not only on your cadets and members, but also on the community. And I'm very interested in trying to help you out in some way, even though ARPA funds are done.
So, are you local, ma'am?
But I'm interested in this.
Are you local?
I am, I am local, but I've been around.
Oh, so I was curious, who's the cadets, were they, were they here cadets?
I can tell you later.
Okay.
I'll tell you.
I'm sure I know them, because I've been here for a few years, so.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, and one other point, the Scrabolas do run their own flight school there, and they work with Marywood University. Marywood has students that put them down there, and they train new pilots. I, I understand about forty new pilots every year, and teach them from A to Z. People have no idea how to fly, they, they come out of there, they're pilots. And I understand there is a, a pretty good severe shortage of pilots in America.
There is.
And, and they're helping fill that gap to the extent that they could, but it's a great program there. Thanks.
Any other comments from council members? Thank you very much, Major Stanford. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen, ma'am, ladies.
All right. Moving on to public comment, any public comment? Mr. Griffith, I know you had a, you're good? Okay. Anybody else, public comment in the audience, on the Zoom?
Second.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry. I do this all the time. I have a public comment that was sent in to us that I forgot to read before. All right. This is from Linda Paul from Wilkes University. It says, "I'm strongly opposed to the proposed 287G agreement which would engage our police officers with ICE's activities. We all have seen ICE is not simply detaining murderers, rapists, drug dealers, et cetera, for deportation. They have been detaining hard-working, long-term members of our communities. One may be in favor of that or not, I and many others are not, but either way, our police officers should not be involved in those activities. We need our police officers to focus on crimes such as assault, murder, rape, child abuse, et cetera. If they are assisting ICE in detaining people who are otherwise upstanding community members, then the police will have fewer resources for tracking down and arresting serious criminals who endanger us all. We will all be less safe. In addition, studies have shown that over and over again, when police are involved in enforcing immigration law, people often fail to report serious crimes because they fear deportation. Again, this makes everyone less safe, so I'm asking the council to please think of the well-being of us all and vote against the proposed agreement." Thank you, Linda Paul. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
No.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.